Alderman Gibson moves.
Of the regular and special meetings.
Second.
The minutes of the previous two meetings, regular and special, be approved and submitted. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Before I go to communications, and we have a public hearing at 7:05 and several other things of business that we need to do before we get into the regular agenda items, I'd like to introduce Mike Wilson. Mike, is Ronnie here also? Mike Wilson, our longstanding friend of Comcast, is here tonight to help us into a new era. We are proud to learn tonight and be a part of the broadening coverage of Comcast that's directing its attention toward local government. We understand Little Rock has already broken the barrier and come north at this meeting last week, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And now the city of North Little Rock is returning that favor by going south, as well as other areas that have heretofore not been covered by this meeting. We want to thank you and Comcast for your longstanding support of the community, and particularly local government, and we appreciate the work that y'all have done in now making us a regional opportunity for people to learn what goes on through this city council. And with that introduction, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Hayes, members of the North Little Rock City Council, Comcast is very pleased to be part of the central Arkansas business community, which is continuing to grow and develop each year. I'm here tonight to talk about a first in central Arkansas. Over the past couple of years, we've heard so much about regionalism and how much more can be accomplished when communities work together. Well, you don't have to look very far to see some concrete examples of what can happen when different communities and leaders work together. Right down the street, you have Altell Arena. And if you look right across the river in Little Rock, you can see the River Market area and land cleared for the Clinton Library. None of these projects would be possible without all of the central Arkansas communities working together. So many of the issues that come before you in this body and decisions that you make affect central Arkansas as a whole, and obviously, there's a great deal of interest beyond the city limits of North Little Rock. Tonight, we begin expanding the viewing area of this telecast. By cable casting this meeting on Comcast Channel 18, in addition to the city's government access channel, you now have the capability of being seen in over 87,000 homes and on over 150,000 television sets. In addition, we've expanded the viewing area of the Little Rock City Board meetings, as the mayor mentioned earlier, by also placing them on Channel 18. Comcast Channel 18 carries over 30 hours of community programming each week, featuring such topics as the latest in health care issues, information regarding social security, and features on the arts and local events. Plus, we've just recently added nearly 100 live Major League Baseball games, featuring the Cardinals, Astros, and Rangers. So you're in very good company. We've televised the Pulaski County Quorum Court on Channel 18 for a number of years, and we certainly appreciate Judge Valines coming to us with this new idea. Secondly, we appreciate the cooperation and the encouragement we have received from Mayor Hayes and from Mayor Daley to proceed with our plans. As a central Arkansas business, Comcast congratulates all of the governmental bodies of Pulaski County for the cooperative spirit that's been demonstrated. We encourage you to continue with these efforts and build a better central Arkansas for all of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike, and we appreciate it, and welcome to all those who are now hopefully going to make us a regular spot on their remote on the second and fourth Mondays of each month, except now I'm going to have to say that next city council meeting, since it falls on Memorial Day, will be on Tuesday following that. So those thousands who tune in.
We'll work that out.
To see us on Monday will miss us and have to look for us on Tuesday.
Look on Tuesday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mike, thank you very much. Let me move now. We have some young ladies, three who are here, and I'd like for them to come up to the microphone, but as I understand it, they are representative of a team who maybe in the next council meeting or sometime in some other way shortly thereafter, we can honor the North Little Rock girls' fast pitch softball team. Am I right in that? Won the state championship. I think these three young ladies serve on that team. In doing so, they established a record that literally will be impossible to beat. Our team went, during the regular season, went 34 and 0, and then obviously didn't lose a game at the tournament, so their total record for the year is 38 and 0. That's going to be impossible to beat. The only way you can beat that is play another game or two, and I'm not sure if that will ever happen. So if I could ask Jennifer Gess and Tamara Phillips and Valencia, is that right?
Valencia.
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 If they come to the microphone. We want y'all to know how proud we are as a city of the three of y'all, also your team, but even more so what recognitions that y'all are receiving tonight, because although I didn't say it from the chair, these three young ladies have, each of them, received a scholarship, a softball scholarship, to Mississippi Valley State University. And these are, to our knowledge, the only three young ladies in Arkansas to ever receive a softball scholarship outside the state of Arkansas. So, you know, with your representing us and us hopefully being able, as a city council, to contribute toward some of your success by working to complete the girls' softball complex, I hope that's where you played most of your games, maybe, that we had a small, very small part to play in your successes. And we know, unfortunately, the three of y'all, and yet, we know some of your teammates will stay home, and we are excited about y'all going outside of state, but don't do too good when you play Arkansas teams when you come back. So if I could present Jennifer Gess, making this the 17th day of April 2002, your day in the city of North Little Rock, in honor of your receiving a softball scholarship to Mississippi Valley State University. Jennifer, thank you. Let's give each one. And your day, Tamara, is equally exciting to us, and rather than not read it again, simply, you're going to be sharing this. We give you one-third of a day, but you can have it all anyway. Tamara, congratulations, and let's give her a hand. And obviously, last but not least, Valencia Young, we are very pleased to add you to the list of those three, and we're very excited about the skills that you display. Now, let me give this to Valencia, and then let's all give her an applause. Now, if y'all would like to come right up here, remember, you're on regional TV right now, so if you care to say something, you know, about what position you play and what you think about the season, I'm sure everybody would be interested in hearing that. Would you want to start?
Okay.
All right.
I play second base and catcher, and most of the season I played second. But it was really, I really enjoyed playing with Jennifer and Valencia and the rest of the seniors in the team. And I feel that, you know, we went out there and played our hardest and gave it all we got, and we won championships.
I'm Valencia, and I play right field. A big contribution to this team is the leadership, and the seniors display that, and without the seniors and the team, the team cooperation, we wouldn't have been so successful. So this is for like, this is for the team in general, so.
All right, okay.
My name's Jennifer, and I play pitcher and shortstop. I think our success on the team was really good, because we all worked together as a team, we played ball together as a team, and we're really, we have really good friendship on and off the team, so that helped us get through the season and meet our success.
All right, all right. Have you got any projections for next year? We're going to make three years in a row. Didn't we win the tournament last year, too? All right, let's see what we do for number three. And now, I think we have Margaret, do you want to, Margaret Paus, Margaret, you ought to come up here, and we've got the North Little Rock cleanup. We want to share some recognition with some folks that were really enthusiastic and that make our city's biggest fan.
I sure do. Yes, we've got most of our sponsors from the Great North Little Rock Cleanup, which was held April the 20th. And we've also got a few of the volunteers who are on our steering committee. I thought we might recognize them in a minute, too. But we first want to say thanks to all the teams in the city that made the whole cleanup possible. We had about 68, 70 teams, and over 1,200 people signed up for the cleanup this year. So we had a lot of people. I credit, I credit that to the spirit and community passion that I think our folks have. Cleaned up a lot of trash, and I think we made an impression on a lot of people, and we couldn't have done it without our sponsors. So we have some little plaques, some cleanup plaques, that we hope they will display. And with our appreciation, we want to begin with recognizing Bank of the Ozarks, Mark Pennabaker, Senior Vice President, and Bank of the Ozarks is also one of our Adopt a Street sponsors.
Thanks to Mark, thanks to Bank of the Ozarks.
You know, Mayor, on behalf of you and your staff, we just want to compliment you on providing a forum for us to give a little bit back to the community. And though it's small, picking up trash, it is a day that we can all get together in the spirit of community and give a little bit back for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Okay, our next sponsor is Funland, Shelby Churchwell, manager, and credit to the Lions Club as well, because, of course, we know they're the new owners, and Funland gave us certificates for every participant, and we hope they take a lot of rides free, and then we hope they buy a lot of rides, too, don't we, Shelby? Do you want to say something about your, 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 your?
We are opened, and we are making progress, and progressing every day, and it's looking much better as we go along, and we hope to have a great summer. Hope y'all all come out.
I was, I was told by Bob Rhodes, who doesn't contradict me, that the carousel is supposed to arrive like Wednesday or Thursday, and one day for installation, so unless the degree comes up, Funland's going to have a brand-new carousel, or Bob Russell, or Bob Russell, Bob Rhodes, he's going to be running in a circle pulling the laggards. Come to Funland on this weekend and enjoy the new carousel and what else do you have to ride, big old.
Bob, you better not let that happen. The last time Funland needed employees, all the department heads had to come, too, so there's no telling what we'll be doing. Okay, the next one is North Little Rock Advertising and Promotion Commission. And Mayor, we're going to present that to Alderman Murray Witcher and Charlie Height, who are, of course, the representatives from our council on the A&amp;P Commission, and they've supported us every year since we began the cleanup. This is our fifth year, and we really appreciate it.
All right, all the questions, all the thanks. Congratulations. Y'all want to call up? Here, I'll tell you what.
Do they want to talk?
Thank you, Mayor. No, they're going to go ahead at 8:00 PM. They're going to estimate it to be around 8:00 PM.
Good, thanks. Okay, Twin City Bank, Bob Birch is here, CEO and President, and Beth Lindsay, who is the branch manager at the Main Street. You all come on up. They helped us in ever so many ways as well, and Beth was on our cleanup steering committee. They also are Adopt a Street sponsors.
All right, thanks a lot, Beth. Robert, thank you very much. Good to see you all again. Yeah, and microphone, Beth?
I just want to say thank you to everyone. This is my first year on the cleanup committee, and I enjoyed working with everyone. All of our branches did the Adopt a Street that day, and then we went out and served lunch to 800 volunteers, which was a lot of fun, so it was good clean fun. We enjoyed it. Thank you.
And our last sponsor who I hope is here, John Roberts. Are you here? There he is, I didn't see you come in. Pulaski County Regional Solid Waste Management District, you all supported us in so many ways and have the last several years. We really appreciate your support all over the county, as well as here.
Mayor, on behalf of the district, we'd like to thank you for the leadership that you show, not only here in North Little Rock, but at the district level. You're making us a better region, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to be sure and thank the other sponsors who are not, were not able to be here. Coca-Cola and Outback Steakhouse. Outback Steakhouse cooked the most wonderful burgers and chicken sandwiches that I have ever had in a park. They were really good, and Coca-Cola provided us all the soft drinks and the water. And that was really neat, because it was kind of a hot, muggy day that day, and we had expected a lot of rain, and it never happened, so we had a great day. I want to just go ahead and recommend to anybody who ever wants to have a steering committee that they include Mary Ruth and Buddy Morgan. Mary Ruth, just come on up. Mary Ruth is here. She's here every year. She's just honorary chairperson, and they're wonderful. Beth, you know, is on our committee. Sue Owens, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Jan Schell with the Mayor's Youth Council, and several others. And, of course, a lot of the departments of city government were very supportive. So thanks for giving us the opportunity, Mayor.
Once again, before I ask everybody to sit down, you know, over, I think, over 800, almost 900 meals were served out back, was cooking those patties right and left, and we passed out almost, if not more, the same number of T-shirts. So you can see a green, reasonably nice colored green T-shirt. You know, you just got to think that even though that happened one day, those young people that put on that T-shirt and picked up that trash, and even a lot of us old people that did it that one day, will remember a little bit more when that window goes down and there's a temptation to throw that trash out the car, out the car door, out the car window. So I think that not only did we do a great job that day, and thanks to Margaret for all her efforts, I know I saw her up here many evenings when I was buttoning down the hatches at four, five, six, or seven o'clock, and she would be up here. So there was a lot of effort by a lot of people, it was a really successful day, but we just hope that what we really would like is for that day to continue to set examples for 365 days that follow, and that we'll try to give it another boost next year. So thanks to all these people, thanks to Alderman. Let's see, Mr., while we've got our public hearing, and then we'll go into a few other things that we need to do, but because of the time, I think our public hearing is relative to our 0227 and 0238, 38 simply being a recodification of what we amended on 0227. With that, let me, unless there's objection, let me call that public hearing regarding the downtown master plan, and I'll call that public hearing to order. I know Mr. Gibson did a lot of, Alderman Gibson did a lot of work on that, and it appears that there's, at least from a discussion standpoint, absent comments coming from the microphone, that there's somewhat of a consensus. Alderman Gibson, you want to make a comment or two, and I don't know if Mr. Bull does, and then I'll turn it open, the microphone open to any other comments.
Mayor, the, a group of us met, I guess it's now almost three weeks ago, to review the plan, and it includes members past and present of our planning staff, our Main Street Argenta people, and subsequent discussions with the landowners basically in the area east of the railroad tracks. I know some of those are here tonight, and I welcome them the opportunity to speak. In every issue that we deal with, sometimes we have to find middle ground, and I want to congratulate all the persons involved in this and helping us reach there. So I guess, Mayor, it either referred to Main Street, I think we'd like to make some comments in regard to it. I believe there may be a couple of business owners that would like to also. Tom Steves is here.
All right, the microphone's open, and I'll just, not in any order, indicate that if you have any comments based on, you know, what's been amended and what is now before you, please address the council.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Tom Steves, and I'm the immediate past president of the Main Street Argenta Project. We've worked for a couple of years with a wide array of concerned citizens on developing the downtown initiative, redevelopment initiative, and thank you very much, Mr. Gibson and other members, for helping us reach the middle ground. We think this is a real progressive step forward in laying a framework for the future. Thank you.
Microphone's open. Well, you did such a good job, Alderman Gibson, that, yeah. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Bob Harden. I have just a few short comments. I read the plan, and I, just this last Friday, with a client, and they asked me to come and just make a couple of remarks.
Okay.
Okay? I do represent the interests of Mr. Glover, who owns a piece of property down in that area. He's in the East Argenta area. And the piece of parcel, the parcel that he owns is near the Rock Island Bridge, where the Rock Island Bridge is, which he owns at the intersection of the Arkansas River and Cedar Street, if I'm reading the map correctly. The north end of the Rock Island Bridge is built on the land owned by Mr. Glover, and that land and the bridge on it were transferred by the Missouri Pacific Railroad in 1990. Mr. Glover's interest in that real estate is assured by Title Insurance Company, and because of all the recent news about the intentions of the city of Little Rock and the Clinton Foundation to renovate that Rock Island Bridge, by a letter dated March of this year, I advised the city of Little Rock of Mr. Glover's ownership, and stated his intention to work with the city regarding access across the bridge, and his intention to develop the bridge and the surrounding property. I provided a copy of that correspondence to you, believe. I call your attention to item three of your agenda, which is a communication from Mr. Daley to the U.S. Department of Transportation regarding the redevelopment of the Rock Island Bridge. And in that letter, Mr. Daley states that the city of Little Rock received ownership of that bridge on December of 2001, and we believe that statement is not true. I reviewed all the documents of that transaction, which were provided by the city of Little Rock, and presented FOI requests, and what we believe is that they bought whatever interest the Missouri Pacific may have had. In any event, the Missouri Pacific Railroad did not warrant title in that property to the city of Little Rock, and we cannot find that they have any title insurance and no evidence of ownership at all.
Is this with regard to our master plan, or can you tell me?
It is, I'm going to bring you there real quick. In January this year, I read in the newspaper, the city of North Little Rock was planning the aquarium, the theater, retail store, restaurants, and hotel in that area that go to the bridge. And we've been advised by the city of North Little Rock that it's in the process of obtaining appraisal to condemn Mr. Glover's land, is what I understand. In any event, we assume that that's the intention of the city. We don't know. We have, Mr. Glover has, if I can get it open, been working on a development plan to develop that particular piece of property.
One second. Y'all up here, we're the home.
But he's working on a mixed commercial and residential use of the property, which is a development not unheard of in other parts of the country. And all that Mr. Glover would like said is that he would like for perhaps not rushing to a conclusion in this plan that's been adopted to overlook the private property rights out in that area. Obviously, the Clinton Library is going to have a substantial economic impact on this area, but we don't know what that impact is, and all of this is coming together rather quickly. I do understand that there are plans in there for walking paths and running paths along that area, is what it appears. I think that page 38 of your plan, to bring things around in a circle, specifically calls for the city to either purchase or take that particular property. It refers to the East Argentza's southern boundary, so we've assumed that that's the property that we're talking about. I guess the request here is, before we start down adopting the plan and moving down that path, that perhaps some of these private property rights be considered, and some of the development plans, which are happening as we speak. I know that you've worked a rather long time on putting this plan together, but a lot of the economics are just now coming together in such a way that makes sense. The people initially that looked at this project have indicated that it is a feasible project in terms of buildability and perhaps economics. So that was my comment. And hopefully, I brought a circle for you to see the application match.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would just, I guess the question I had, is it your understanding that the city has appraised the property?
I have heard that they are in the process of obtaining an appraisal.
I can answer that. The city has appraised a portion of that property.
Okay.
So the answer is yes.
Yeah, so you know more than I do, really. I'm working off rumor.
Your rumors accurate to a certain degree.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, question, please, before you get so late. How many acres does Mr. Glover have an interest in?
Well, there's several acres there. I'm going to say this particular piece of property that we're talking about is an acre or two, probably, but there are several acres around it that is being joined together for development, and it's hard to say exactly how big this particular development that I'm speaking of would take. What I'm showing you, picture up here, is strictly on the bridge itself, and isn't necessarily one that you can quantify in terms of acreage.
Ask another question, please. He owns the underlying fee interest of the property the bridge is located on, is that what you're telling us?
I'm telling you, he owns the bridge, is what I believe, and the underlying fee. Being a piece of real estate, sometimes it's difficult to separate one from the other.
All right, yes.
Including the levee?
Well, I don't know what constitutes the levee.
I'm sorry?
If it's on the property, I'm sure it does.
It does? I don't believe it does. No, no, I'm not arguing about this. Reason I said, our plan calls for extending bike trails through, including widening the top of the levee and installing a walkway. As far as I know, that levee belongs to the Corps of Engineers, but, I mean, and we're requested.
I'm, like I said, all I've got is verbiage in here. I haven't seen a drawing or a survey, nor can I place it on the property. But obviously, it, as I understand, it's to approach the bridge at some point to get on it.
That, but not in this plan?
I don't know.
Not in this plan?
That's what I'm asking, I don't believe.
It is not in this plan.
That's what it appears to be, and I'm, maybe it's, maybe it isn't. But these.
It's a separate plan, which we will bring back in.
This plan is in very broad terms, in terms of a focus, and therefore, I don't know all the specifics, because this plan is not written with specifics. I didn't think you intended to.
If you'll read the ordinance, it is very specific. It doesn't do, and I can read.
Oh, it doesn't modify the zoning?
That's right. It doesn't, doesn't, does not rezone any property, change the city's land use plan, create any new overlay districts, affect any existing overlay districts, create any new roads, nor does it change the master street plan.
But to implement your plan does require that you acquire, possibly by condemnation, properties lying in that, along the river.
I have made every effort, there's not a single word that says condemnation in this piece of legislation.
There is that says acquisition, and that's in the, on page 38, if you look at the implementation.
Purchase rivers, purchase riverfront property to extend the north shore of Weber Walk along East Argentza's southern boundary.
Uh huh.
I don't see the word by, I don't see the word, you're, Mr. Glover has a fee interest in a portion of property there, but there's an awful lot of property past Mr. Glover's that he doesn't have an interest in.
That's true.
And people are interested in us expanding that trail down through there. And if we can go past Mr. Glover's piece of property right on top of the levee, it doesn't affect Mr. Glover's property at all.
I mean, he's only interested in the property that has the effect on his property.
Let me ask, I guess we're talking a little bit of legalese. I know one of the issues that we had, and I don't know that I've seen any kind of written document except for representation by the Clinton Foundation, that they're going to spend the $40,000 to $5 million to improve the bridge, and I assume that that will continue. But if it shouldn't, I know that these that you refer to, and I think you, since you've looked at it, reserves a right by Union Pacific to access the property to take down the. down the bridge.
For a time-specific period, which is.
That's correct. So what I'm, and I know that the Corps of Engineers, not the Corps of Engineers, the Coast Guard had indicated that that was a responsibility of the owner. So what you're saying is that if that bridge is taken down, Mr. Glover is assuming that liability?
Well, those responsibilities go with ownership, as you well know.
I understand.
And so I'm assuming, are you, are you suggesting it be taken down?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that if the foundation chose to change its mind, and then the bridge had to be taken down, then Mr. Glover is assuming that responsibility, or a portion of it.
Is that a question or a statement?
Yes, yes. Question?
Well, it's a, it's a question that I'm not gonna answer.
Oh, okay.
But it's certainly a suggestion you could.
Well, we, we were talking about the legal things that have been reviewed, and you're a lawyer. I was just asking the question, if from a legal standpoint, then Mr. Glover would have that responsibility if he is indeed the owner of the bridge?
That could be true, and the city of Little Rock might have that responsibility, too, if they.
It wouldn't be, the only thing I know is it wouldn't be the city of North Little Rock at this point.
So I assume you're not interested in the bridge?
Not, no, it may be, may very well be. This community might be.
It may be.
All right. Alderman Yildig?
Nah. Well, I think, I think the answer to that is that the development plans that they under, that they are looking at would require that the bridge be maintained, and so there would be a responsibility. If you're gonna develop a bridge, obviously, you're gonna have to be responsible for suggesting that it's gonna stay in the gray area, so that it's not gonna fall in the water, so.
And pay for the costs associated with that.
That's true. And so I think that the plan is that it stay in the air, and I don't think anybody's even threatened to tear down the bridge that I know of until you just suggested it. But, but their intent.
I didn't suggest anybody tear down the bridge.
Their intent is that, that the bridge stay up and that it be developed.
Mayor, we, we, let's get back to the subject. Get back to the subject of the downtown master plan, because that's not, that's not part of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Microphone's open. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and, and, unless somebody asks otherwise, adjourn the public hearing, and without objection, I'm gonna withdraw O. two twenty-seven and call O. two thirty-eight.
This is an order adopting the North Little Rock downtown master plan, first reading.
Moose Ben Rose placed on second reading.
Begging, on motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting the North Little Rock downtown master plan, second reading.
And Moose Ben Rose placed on his third reading.
Second, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let's, before we. Hey, well, let's go get communications. Let's do that, and then there are a couple of other points that we gotta do before we get to the agenda. Do I have a blanket motion?
Mayor, I move we accept and file one through ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any council member care for any of those to be withdrawn?
Number two needs to be.
Right. Number two?
I would like number one read by title, please.
All right. Number two, and number one read by title. Seeing no others on the motion, blanket motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right. If you'd read number one by title.
Communication number one is a petition requesting speedhomes filed by Tracy Wicklow, and the area is east Fifty-Sixth Street, and this has thirty-five signatures.
Do you have a motion?
We accept and file.
Second, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number two, and, and read it by title. Mr. Rhodes, you wanna come to the microphone?
This is a memorandum dated April twenty-second to Mayor Hayes and the city council from Bob Rhodes regarding the notice of a public hearing on parks and recreation needs.
What that notice is, says that May twentieth of this year, which is what?
It's a week, week from today.
Week from today, at the Old Pro Golf Shop at six o'clock in the evening at Burns Park.
Burns Park.
That, you know, we're gonna, that the Parks Department or the Parks and Recreation Commission is gonna be holding a hearing that essentially covers the gamut in terms of our activities and, and assets that the Parks Department has and, and what we do and where we wanna go. You wanna expand on that?
That's correct. Basically, each year, we have an annual meeting that we review any requests from the public concerning capital improvements or programming. The number of people has grown each year significantly. The first year, we had this, mainly the ball association showed up. This year, I'm already hearing, there's a, a sand volleyball group, the dog park, there's a group will be coming and making proposals, and some different groups, but those are some issues that'll be covered at that time. And it follows the regular Parks and Recreation Commission meeting that starts at five o'clock, also at Burns Park Golf.
Same building?
Same building.
So come early for the meeting and stay late for the public hearing. With that, do I, do I have a motion?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to adopt, or to?
Accept and file.
Accept and file.
So moved.
All right. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right. If you'd read number one by title.
Communication number one is a petition requesting speedhomes filed by Tracy Wicklow, and the area is east Fifty-Sixth Street, and this has thirty-five signatures.
Do you have a motion?
We accept and file.
Second, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right. If you'd read number one by title.
Communication number one is a petition requesting speedhomes filed by Tracy Wicklow, and the area is east Fifty-Sixth Street, and this has thirty-five signatures.
Do you have a motion?
We accept and file.
Second, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number two, and, and read it by title. Mr. Rhodes, you wanna come to the microphone?
This is a memorandum dated April twenty-second to Mayor Hayes and the city council from Bob Rhodes regarding the notice of a public hearing on parks and recreation needs.
What that notice is, says that May twentieth of this year, which is what?
It's a week, week from today.
Week from today, at the Old Pro Golf Shop at six o'clock in the evening at Burns Park.
Burns Park.
That, you know, we're gonna, that the Parks Department or the Parks and Recreation Commission is gonna be holding a hearing that essentially covers the gamut in terms of our activities and, and assets that the Parks Department has and, and what we do and where we wanna go. You wanna expand on that?
That's correct. Basically, each year, we have an annual meeting that we review any requests from the public concerning capital improvements or programming. The number of people has grown each year significantly. The first year, we had this, mainly the ball association showed up. This year, I'm already hearing, there's a, a sand volleyball group, the dog park, there's a group will be coming and making proposals, and some different groups, but those are some issues that'll be covered at that time. And it follows the regular Parks and Recreation Commission meeting that starts at five o'clock, also at Burns Park Golf.
Same building?
Same building.
So come early for the meeting and stay late for the public hearing. With that, do I, do I have a motion?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to adopt, or to?
Accept and file.
Accept and file.
So moved.
All right. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay. Now, before we go back to a couple other items, each of you recall, I think, our tradition, since no one's objected to it, I'll, you know, take the liberty and say our tradition out during campaign season, and those who've come before didn't quite get the bang for their buck that y'all who've come tonight are gonna get with regard to countywide, seeking countywide offices or district-wise that may go south of the river. And I know, you know, our current representative, who has some, we have some legislation that he was very helpful with us tonight in distributing some funds, Tracy Steele, who is our representative, is also a candidate for the Arkansas Senate. Mr. Steele, you wanna come up and introduce yourself in, in an hour or less, tell us what, what your interest is?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, I am Tracy Steele, running for the Arkansas State Senate, and I'm pleased to be back home. I have a huge district, the largest senate district in Pulaski County. About forty percent of the district is north of the river, that encompasses the south half of North Little Rock, but also encompasses some unincorporated areas such as McAlmont, Rush Island, as well as Valentine, Buden Road, and across the river. It takes the east corridor all the way down to the end of the county, including College Station, Wrightsville, Higgins, Sweet Home, and then the core city, downtown Little Rock, downtown North Little Rock, as well as the south end part of the city of Little Rock. Just over seventy thousand people, and I'm, I'm excited to have the opportunity to be seeking this office. I got my start certainly right here, not only as an elected official, but as a young man, and this city has given me so much, and it's, it's a blessing for me, Mayor, to be able to give back, give back to this city that has really raised me. As a young boy, I watched and, and remember the first time my mother brought me here to a city council meeting because she could not find a babysitter, and I can just remember being very impressed with the motions and the parliamentary procedures, and, and I thought that day, one day, I'm, I might like to do something in that realm, and God has blessed me to be a state representative, and now I'm, I'm trying to, to go further. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I've, I've known many of you for, for a long time, grew up with Alderman Dobbin's and, and Alderman Thomas, built a facility that, that raised me, Sherman Park Recreation Center, and just appreciate the opportunity to serve.
We might point out, and I'm not sure about Alderman Thomas and Dobbin, but I know Alderman Gibson, you would be our senator, and so we'll be watching pretty close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good you. Arnessa Staden, Ms. Staden, you wanna come to the microphone and tell us your district?
Good afternoon. I wanna thank the mayor and the councilmen. I'm Arnessa Staden, running for the House of Representatives, District Thirty-nine, which is encompasses downtown North Little Rock, where we're now sitting, as well as Rose City, Glenview, McAlmont, Meadow Park, Rixey, all around to the border of Jacksonville. I've been very blessed to have some wonderful support. I've been endorsed by the AFL-CIO, AEA, and Acorn, and I just wanna thank you for your support and for your votes if you live in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I was reminded, so I won't tell them what your order, that there are two candidates who didn't point this out before, although we knew that. I knew they were probably waiting on Comcast to reach an approach, too. So without trying to.
We didn't have any way knowing that.
Go first, I'm gonna let y'all, you know, decide by yourselves.
Okay.
My name's Greg Yilding, and I'm your constable for Hill Township. Any of you that may not know what that is, that's North Little Rock, Sherwood, Jacksonville, Marmell, anything north of the river. And, and I wish I could say that, that I could do nothing as being an alderman like I do being a constable, but I certainly can't say that. And I've enjoyed serving as constable and enjoyed what I do, and just what you get paid, nothing. So anyway, you know, I've always had, you know, professional law enforcement is, is what we need in the county, and that's what I've always been, and I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and introduce myself. Thank you.
Yeah, we just have to point out that, we just have to point out that probably Constable Yilding is the only one that the Gazette, Democrat, Democrat Gazette has endorsed based on a campaign pledge to do nothing if elected. And he's, as I'm told, he's honored that pledge.
To the mayor, city council, to the citizens of North Little Rock, as well as Little Rock, and as well as the Pulaski County. I'm Roosevelt Duane Dobbin. I currently serve as alderman of the city of North Little Rock. I was elected in nineteen ninety-eight. I've enjoyed my tenure here, really learned the legislative process, and now I'm ready to move on to a higher office. I'm seeking state representative, District Thirty-nine. I've been around, many people know me, getting to know so many more, had the pleasure of introducing legislation that formed a partnership with our school districts as well as our parks and recreation, allowing our young people a place to spend some productive hours after school, provided they had a good record, a good track record at school. I think it's important that we continue to do things like that, and I wanna continue that as your representative. I'm open, I'm honest, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Not, not to disparage the General Assembly, Alderman Dobbin, having served there for, for one term, I can say that there's no higher office than the city council of North Little Rock. Thank you very much. Are we missing anybody? Is there anyone that we have overlooked? You know, we wanna certainly acknowledge a few friends, and we're gonna ask Mr. Harvey now to come up to the microphone to talk about sprinklers, but in doing that, we'd like to acknowledge our longtime manager of the North Little Rock Water Department prior to its merger, and, and, and short-term employee of Central Arkansas Water, but always our friend Fred Glover. Fred, we're glad to have you with us. And you could probably, Mr. Harvey, let you come back for a short return here in just a second. If you'd like.
You bet. Well, Mayor, members of the council, thanks for giving me the opportunity to address some of your concerns about sprinklers and billing. During the month of March, we converted the accounts in North Little Rock to a state-of-the-art
months, is for available service, and that is an approved policy throughout the utility industry. Even with the North Little Rock Electric Department, they do charge, as I understand, a minimum charge, and even on secondary meters where there's no consumption, they have a minimum charge. We checked with all of the utilities, the water utilities around this area, they all have a minimum charge even with no consumption. Another factor that we have to be factored into this is the fact that the sprinkling meters is what's putting a big demand on us during the peak hours. During the peak hours, we have to have a system developed for those sprinkling meters, and our rate consultant has pointed out to us that there should be even more revenue from the sprinkling meters because of that high demand and the need for increased capacity because of sprinkling meters. Another option that we're considering is to not have that or to reduce that turn-on charge. Then the customers can have it turned off. There would be more advantage to them to have it turned off than if they did have the reconnect fee. Under the cost-of-service methodology, the commission did adopt the principles that are recommended by the American Water Works Association, which is, there's three that I'll read to you. The benefits, the beneficiaries of a service should be paid for the service. They should pay for that service. Services provided for the benefit of a specific group, individual, or business should not be paid by general revenues. The level of service charges should be related to the cost of providing that service. Some of the enhancements that have happened with our new billing system that I'd like to point out to you, we're hearing more about this negative one, is that customers now have longer to pay their bill. It was 14 days, and now it's 21 days. And after 12 months on the system with a good payment record, the deposit will be returned to all customers that have the good payment record. Customers have telephone access 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to get information on their account, the account balance and status of their account. Customers do receive an enhanced bill now with a return envelope to return the payment, and starting in June, those sprinkling meter accounts will be combined with the other bill. With our system of 20 pay agents, customers have a much better opportunity to pay their bill even in the evening hours and on weekends. And starting next year, North Little Rock will see a reduction in their rates in 2003. And while our consolidation agreement pointed out that we would have equalized rates in 10 years, we're planning and will do that in six years. According to a rate survey that we just saw done for the state of Arkansas, a customer using 5,000 gallons of water in the state a month would pay $20. The average bill would be $20.27. Residents of North Little Rock pay $11.70. And in 2003, that will go down by 2%. That's the first step in equalizing those rates. Since July of last year, we've worked very diligently to get policies uniform across the two cities. We realize that we've got to have the same policy all the way across the system. We ask that you be patient with us while we try to do that, and I'll try to answer your questions.
Microphone's open. Thank you, Jim, for coming. We appreciate it. Microphone's open. Alderman Height.
I guess, Mr. Harvey, I appreciate your comments tonight. In the last few days, I've been thinking about this issue, and I've had several of my constituents up in my ward that remind me of the issue on a number of occasions, calling them a home. We've kind of been discussing, what would be the problem with, I don't know what month that most people turn their sprinkler system off. In my case, I usually turn it off toward the end of October, and then I turn it back on somewhere in the neighborhood of the 1st of April. What would be the problem with not reading those meters during those months that people are turning them off, and then reading them then around the 1st of April, or whatever the normal reading period is during that spring month? And if that meter has moved in any way, charge them for the usage that, or during those winter months, that, as opposed to charging them a minimum charge, charge them actually for the water or the consumption that they used during that period of time on that sprinkler system.
Well, I won't tell you what we will do, except that we will factor that in. I will consider that when we make the recommendation to the commission. Again, the reason for the minimum charge is for service availability, and as long as that meter is active, our meter readers get a notification to read the meter. And of course, they've got to have some way to know either the meter's in service or it's not. Otherwise, they'll be out there reading it. And I understand what you say, you know, because we have it programmed that in April they come by and read it, if there's consumption, then they pay for that amount of water.
But that's used during the winter months.
Right.
Has that been discussed?
It has. Believe me, I've heard from your constituents as well, and I think I've talked to all 2,000 of them, and I've got about 2,000 recommendations. But we're factoring them all in.
I know they fill up my answering machine every day at home.
Thank you for that, for our friend.
Mr. Harvey, again, thank you for coming by tonight and visiting with us. You know, I guess one of the things, Mr. Glover, sitting back here with his guidance and with your cooperation, we were able to work through the merger. And I know there are great many benefits for North Little Rock, and I know you've hit a series of bumps merging the two systems from a philosophical standpoint, and this is one of those. Again, I'd like to reiterate our position that I'm gonna ask our council to vote on tonight, and that's, number one, that individuals be allowed to call in and turn off the system. And I think that's already provided for in current regulations. Number two, that when they call to turn it back on, if they either turn it on or have a professional service turn it on, we think that they should be able to avoid the turn-on charge, which is a minimal charge, I understand. But still, if you're paying someone to turn your system back on and check it out, and then to pay $15 on top of that is, of course, it's not a hardship, it just does not seem particularly fair. Again, I'll reiterate, particularly on sprinkler systems, I guess my philosophy is that if you have two meters in your yard, and you're already paying a minimum on one, that you should be able to operate your second meter strictly on a demand basis. It seems fair, and it probably is the only utility that that would be applicable to in our system. As someone pointed out to me, you have a minimum on your electric, gas, and other charges. Again, you don't have two billings for the same service, and I guess that's about the only point I'd make. But thank you for coming by.
Thank you.
Alderman Yielding.
I'd just like to say this. Number one, I believe this is a rate increase. Okay? You've increased the rate from $0 to $20.77, or whatever it may be. I don't have a sprinkler meter. I probably won't, since it costs $400 to get one instead of $150, but anyway, that's another issue. I'd just like to say, this is North Little Rock. This is not Little Rock. And the problem is that they've been getting all this money from Little Rock sprinkler customers all these years, and now they want to come over here and get it from North Little Rock sprinkler customers. It's easy money, isn't it? I mean, you know, there's already two meters there, like Alderman Witcher's saying. You're gonna come by there and read the meter anyway, so you can look and see if anybody used the water that's there. Our people over here are not used to a bunch of charges. They're not used to excessive fees, privileged tax fees, and a lot of things that maybe people across the river are used to. We're not used to it. I see this as a rate increase. I'm gonna give the Water Commission time to look at this and, you know, and I think do the right thing, which is to eliminate this fee and a rate increase and fee as far as turning it back on. And if not, then, you know, what I will propose is just a resolution saying that we disapprove of the rate increase on sprinkler meters. And I just want you to know how I stand and the way I feel about it. You know, Murray and Charlie are right. There's just nothing fair about paying for something that you don't use when somebody's coming by there anyway and reading your regular meter. There probably aren't very many sprinkler meters, except commercial where you just have a sprinkler meter and not a water meter at somebody's house. I mean, you've got both meters. So that's what people in North Little Rock are used to. Yes, we want the benefit of the merged system and future water sources and all that has to offer. But saying, well, we're gonna equalize rates, and, you know, your rates are gonna go down and everything else, but this rate's going up, so I just, you know, hope y'all would take that into consideration. But I have one other question, and that is about the backflow. I mean, what did y'all decide about the backflow preventer charge and that sort of thing? Could you address that?
You would have to bring that one up, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I would.
Well, let me address the other one just a moment first. First of all is yes, we certainly will consider that. But I would like to point out to you, you say we have a meter reader going by there anyway. We have one of the lowest meter reading costs in the country, and that's because we do it on contract, but we pay per meter. And if we're reading two meters there, we're gonna pay for two meters rather than one. That's just a small issue, but it's something.
Well, I know, but I mean, but here again.
Hold on. Go ahead and finish.
All right, go ahead.
So we do have that additional charge, and while it's small, it is there. But certainly, we're going to consider everything that we hear, and the commission has got a lot to consider.
Let me go ahead and just make a comment, too, because, you know, one of the things, and I don't have a water meter either. And as such.
Sprinkler meter.
I have a sprinkler meter.
I got a water meter. I don't have a sprinkler meter. Thank you, Alderman. Thank the Lord, I do have a water meter. Or I would be in trouble. But in any event, I don't have a water meter, and yet I know that the Water Department, Central Arkansas Water, you know, essentially is revenue neutral in terms of the cost of service. To me, the one thing that they need to do is, first of all, and this was a common thread among all of our discussions during the merger, and that is, and that's one of the things that absolutely became a prerequisite, you know, from our negotiating standpoint, North River, and that is, everything had to be equal over a short period of time. And rates were given a six-year period, a 10-year period to do that, and it appears that they're gonna strive toward that in a much shorter time period than otherwise. So if, you know, if revenue neutral in terms of what the Water Department does, with the exception of a reserve fund to go toward future water sources, that means that their allocation, as Mr. Harvey indicated, if the balloon squeezed somewhere, it's gotta balloon out somewhere else. So, you know, and the way I look at it, you know, there ought to be some equality for those of us who have one meter, as well as some of those who have two meters. And so while I understand the discussions, I think that they ought to be separate in terms of how they allocate their costs, you know, that they ought to be separate in determining what's fair, you know, for the system as a whole, because that's what they have to do. There's no way one system can favor one side over the other, north versus south. It has to be uniform throughout, and the only variation as such is rates, and there's a period of time, as we talked about, that those rates have to be equalized. So there's really little choice, as I see it, for the commission in terms of how they do it. Little choice in terms of certain principles, and that is, they have to be equal on both sides of the river, and those charges need to be uniform, and they need to be allocated based on cost of service or a reasonable expectation of what that cost of service would be. So, you know, you combine those, and I would certainly feel that the commission will try to do what's right. And there are some things that are on both sides that are gonna have to be changed as we go through this merger. Now, Alderman Yielding, while I hate to point it out, you know, we didn't charge a franchise fee, nor did we charge a payment lieu of taxes. Both of those are new items on the bill that our citizens are paying for. So, you know, while we are going to enjoy substantially lower rates over a lifetime, there are some short-term items that'll appear on the bill that weren't there before. There are some charges that we'll have to perhaps incur that weren't done before because that was not our practice. And as we are, in some instances, going on the negative side, in some other instances, we're going on the positive side. I know that in visiting with John Thurmond shortly prior to the merger, that had Little Rock instituted, and it's been upheld in court, because that's where we were going, of a set of charges that I was over at the Little Rock City Council chambers and, you know, unfortunately witnessed, but witnessed in the sense that we were able to rectify that later, that those original charges been in effect up to a year ago, this community would have paid roughly $7 to $8 million more in water charges than we would be otherwise paid. So, you know, it's not a painless merger, and it's not something that the newness won't continue to take place. Hopefully, we'll get most of these bugs worked out, you know, over the next several months. But, you know, but this community, and I speak on both sides, both long and short term, are going through growing pains. But with regard to Central Arkansas Water, which is also going through growing pains, that merger is, I still say, you know, one of the most beneficial long-term things that this community's ever had an opportunity to be a part of. Alderman Witcher.
Okay, Mayor, can I just say ditto?
Absolutely.
Instead of repeating all it, and I guess after Mr. Height speaks, could we call this up?
Be fine.
Brought the term like a combined billing?
Yes.
And that probably affects North Little Rock customers more so than most customers south of the river. You're gonna be combining the sprinkler meter along with the regular house meter on the same statement?
That's right.
Is it gonna be itemized, or is it gonna be on total usage for the two meters?
It'll be itemized.
It'll be itemized.
Yes, it will. Right.
And before I call it, just one other thing I'd like to add, and this is the thing that, you know, that obviously we'll be able to quantify, but, you know, for those who use, you know, water with regard to watering their yards through the meters, the rates for that water itself is going to be level and decreasing, as Mr. Harvey said. So those who have water meters and sprinkler meters, by and large, probably use more water than your average homeowner, and that rate therefore will be more beneficial to them. With that comment, let me, without objection, call
0279.
0279 at the request of Alderman's Height and Witcher.
This is a resolution urging Central Arkansas Water to amend current charges relating to water meters commonly referred to as sprinkler water meters.
Lou Ferrigno?
Second. On the motion?
And we all, before we do that, though, we'd like to ask that if any of the other Alderman, city council members would like to co-sponsor this with us by us attaching their names to this document also.
I would do it. I would, too.
All right.
You got nothing.
You got nothing.
On the motion?
Gibson, Yielding.
Yes.
Dobbinson.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And we appreciate Mr. Harvey being here. Thanks, Mr. Glover, you also for being in attendance, and, you know, we look forward to continuing to work with you. All right, Mr. Smith, Mike Smith, where are you? Tell us about our 105,000 going to Dark Hollow, where the Corps of Engineers, I think we had a few questions about, you know, what's our next steps, where we are, and, you know, you and I had a little session, and you shared this information with me, and I asked you to find out another question to answer soon. Hopefully, you have.
That's right, and today I did talk to Mike Biggs with the Corps of Engineers, and he did update me a little bit on those questions you asked. The overall picture, this is the project to alleviate the flooding in the Dark Hollow area by a major Corps of Engineers project. This project has been in the planning, or it's been in the study stage for a year or so now, and they plan to finish up the study portion of the project sometime later next year. Originally, it'd been about August of this year, but things happen. And later next year, they plan to finish that study part of the project. The money we've contributed so far, we'll cover that. There's no more money that's being asked for right now, other than that $105,000 we've contributed, in addition to about $200,000 that we've in the past contributed. That will take us through the study process, and if at that time, the study indicates that there's a cost-benefit ratio of better than one to one, they will deem it a project, and they will go forward with the design plans of the project.
Is this before or after action by Congress?
Before. At that time, if it's deemed satisfactory, they will proceed with the design portion of the project, which is expected to take about a year. And at the current time, they're looking at it being, and I ask again today to make sure that I had it right, they're looking at it about being a $16 million project, and it being something on the order of a 10- or 20-foot tunnel to replace the redwood tunnel that's there now. That could change. He said at any time, it could escalate to a $50 million project or down to a $10 million project. But right now, that's where it is.
Because I know the best guess that they gave us one other time was $30 million, I believe, in that neighborhood.
That's right.
All right, now, at what point will this council need to come up with any more money, and at what point will there need to be an involvement of the legislative process in Congress?
Well, it looks like it's gonna be a little bit more than two years. After the study, that's over a year from now, and then the design plans, that'll be about a year. At that point, the Corps said that they would take it to Congress. And I asked about the process that that would be, and he termed that a congressional ad project, congressional ad on. So he said that really the procedure for getting the money wasn't set in concrete like it might otherwise be, and he said it might a whole lot depend on our local city and maybe how we could communicate with our legislators.
So when they go into actual design, you know, will they, I assume, be in contact with the community to talk about the various aspects of that design? Because I know at one point, they talked about levees, they talked about several approaches to the redwood tunnel, and now I hear you saying they're talking about a big tunnel and no levees.
That's true. There, I made mention of the levees or the detention basins, and he mentioned that there looked like there might be one basin, but it would be more of a sediment collection basin than a detention basin. And of course, yeah, when they finish their study, they'll their study, they'll be in contact with us to make sure that, that what they have, uh, not only satisfies them, but satisfies us, too.
All right, let me just summarize it real quickly. One year for plans. I mean, one year to determine, you know, the feasibility and then the ratio. Once that's done, then another year to do the construction plan. Once that's done, then they'll go to Congress for the funds, and at that point, you know, is when they'll look to the city for its proportion of share.
That's right. He said that, uh, at that time, uh, and, and I asked him about how long that would take to get the congressional action, and he said that it could take a short period or a long period because of it being in a, not a standard case. Didn't know. It would have a whole lot to do with political processes.
And, and if I remember right, and then I'll open it for any questions to the council, that, uh, that it was, it's similar to the, the earmark that we received when we first got our, the Corps got a designation to go forward with the planning parts of, of this project. So it's a special piece of legislation, or special, uh, wording in, in whatever the broader congressional enactment is, it specifies this project, so it has to be a legislative enactment, uh, that would, would be done as per, as per the political process.
That's right.
What's that, let me just ask, Alderman Thompson and Alderman Dobbin?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, you saying that, that Corps will take a, a full year to design that, or do that?
I'm sure it'll be a year.
And then, that's a long time. But then the second thing, is it, uh, thought of going in the present location?
At the present time, they're looking at minimum amount of, uh, right-of-way acquisition and putting a tunnel maybe adjacent to or very close to the existing tunnel, and maybe abandoning the old tunnel, reconnecting the existing drains that go into, into the new tunnel, and just sealing the old tunnel.
Alderman Dobbin?
Yes, uh, Michael, did you talk with them, and did they say whether they're gonna cover the actual ditch portion of it, or leave it open?
That wasn't mentioned.
All right, and second, are we looking at only one design, or, or at least the one, the A-plus design, or B-plus design, or are we looking at only one design at this point?
It appears that this study process is kinda focusing in down to one design, and that is the tunnel. They, he said that earlier in the study, they looked at the open ditch, uh, possibility of taking it to the river, and it's just, that's thirty million dollars. It's just, uh, too expensive, and, and it, to my surprise, it turns out that this tunnel of this size apparently will satisfy flooding, uh, requirements. When we first looked at this, and the reason we had thought about an open ditch all the way to the river, was because we were looking at a triple ten-by-ten box culvert was what it was gonna take. And now they're saying it's, it's not gonna have to take that much.
Well, my concern is, uh, right next to the Redwood School, just covering that portion of it, uh, this, could I ask them to see if they, what would the cost be in that?
I don't think that'd be any problem at all.
Okay.
Are we ready to cover it, Alderman Thompson?
That part, but the, but, but it back up, no.
He, uh, they mentioned that after the congressional add-on was decided, uh, before they put it out for bid, but they do have their, uh, construction cost estimate, that's when they will come to us and ask for all of our share upfront, thirty-five percent.
Mayor, quick, a quick question. Are you stunned, Mayor?
Uh, I'm not stunned.
Mr. Smith, right, during this process, as they go through and they do their environmental impact statements in their study, there will be opportunities for the public to, uh, to comment on their plans, and...
I don't know when the next public hearing is, but I'm sure, I'm positive, there will be several.
Okay, good, thank you.
Help me out, Ms. Thomas, don't we have about, it seemed like to me we put aside a million or a million and a half in that Dark Hollow drainage program, or am I, what, what, you know how much we have in there?
We have five hundred and twenty thousand.
After the money that's been spent. So we set aside somewhere in the neighborhood of a million?
Yeah, five hundred thousand last year, and two hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay. So there's roughly a half a million after, after this drawdown. Okay, so if we continue to add to this, then, then what we'll need to do is figure out what's missing after the actual costs, uh, come in, and what our percentage is. Is that sixty-five, thirty-five?
Sixty-five, thirty-five of construction costs, yes.
We can't push to get that eighty, twenty?
I'm afraid not, I wish. All right, uh, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Marvin, you wanna come to the microphone? We're all gonna get pretty educated tonight. Where's Tim? Now, we had some questions to adopt the legislation, but, you know, just give a brief explanation of the interconnection between Little Rock and North Little Rock on our signalization, if you would, and, uh, and then stand for questions.
Sure. Uh, about two years ago, the city of Little Rock initiated a, uh, eighty-twenty matching program through IST to re-signalize and systematize all of their downtown traffic signals. As we went through the consultant study and, and recommendations, it became, uh, obvious that knowing what the traffic was like as it was entering their downtown system was equally as important to the function of that system as just knowing what traffic was immediately in the downtown area. Well, of course, some of the primary feeders into Little Rock come across the Main Street Broadway and, uh, Interstate forty bridges, or Interstate thirty bridges. Uh, a, a, a manner in which that could be monitored would be by having the ability to monitor traffic coming from North Little Rock into Little Rock, and those monitors would be placed at the ends of the bridges. Well, at the time when they're doing that, it would also be advantageous to North Little Rock to have that same feedback, so that we can control our signals to adequately provide, uh, uncongested traffic flow to the traffic coming into North Little Rock. That's when the, I think it's about ninety-one thousand dollar cost estimate to add that interconnection between the two was arrived at. That's the, the purpose of the, uh, question that was before you at the last council meeting. The, uh, uh, interconnection will provide only data input. It will not allow either city to control the traffic signals in the other city.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Uh, and now let's go back to, uh, old business.
Resolution, uh, the first resolution, O-257, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, I understand, uh, that there may be someone here, this has to do with a two-seventeen West Fifth Street.
Oh, we wanna have a comment.
Just one second, let me just, uh, did we have a public hearing on this, Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, I would assume we did last time, but I would encourage you to do it again this time.
All right, uh, and, and I know that there may be somebody here that wants to speak to this. I think you, you called Alderman Yielding. Uh, let me just go ahead and call, uh, call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance, and condemning said structures providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Uh, just a second, Alderman. Let me just, uh, open this for a public hearing. Uh, is anyone care to speak to two-seventeen West Fifth Street?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Whitwell?
Steve Whitwell. Uh, I represent the property owner, Ms. Sue Akel, and, uh, we're pleased to announce that we have Mr. Thomas Mar, who is contracted to purchase that property, and can probably tell the council what his plans are with respect to, uh, saving and restoring that property.
He wants to talk to us? We'd love to hear him. Uh, has that contract been executed?
Yes, Your Honor.
Oh, yes. Your Honor's fine, Jim. He can wait to make points.
He left three letters off the end of that, E-R-Y.
Uh, Council, um, my intentions with the residence are to restore it back to a single-family residence, and restore the exterior of the home to its, uh, original appearance as it was at the turn of the century.
Uh, what period of time?
Uh, nineteen-eleven.
I know.
You asked!
My intent was, over what period of time do you intend to do that?
Um, I'm hoping to get started on the construction in a couple months, and it'll probably take about six months to do the, the construction, as the house is pretty far gone.
All right, uh, let me, uh, you know, let me, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go ahead and hold that legislation, this legislation in one council meeting, uh, and I'd like, uh, Mr. Whitwell, if you or your client or, or whoever could, could visit a little bit with Mr. Seitz. Gary, are you here? Uh, who's here on the head? Okay. Uh, uh, do you see that lady back there? And, uh, she's with, uh, the Code Department, and, uh, and, and I just want them to monitor, you know, what's going on. Uh, I'll probably withdraw this legislation at the next council meeting, uh, and, and yet, we obviously wanna keep up with what's going on very closely, because we, we, we're not in the business of tearing down, and we don't like that, but we sure don't want, uh, Alderman Yielding, I see your hand, and I'll holler at you just one second. Uh, just as soon as, uh, I won't holler at you, I'll read. Uh, but we wanna make sure that we keep a very close eye on this. Obviously, uh, again, we wouldn't have had it up here to be condemned if it wasn't really in need of attention. All right, Alderman Yielding?
Uh, I would, uh, really like for you to withdraw the legislation. Uh, Mr. Mar is on our agenda to be appointed to the Historic District Commission, and I'm sure that Mr. Mar is going to restore the house, and do so in a timely way.
I appreciate it, Alderman, and I'll go back to the next council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'll hold it.
Next item, ordinance O-219, Mayor Hayes.
Please, uh, I'm, I'm gonna hold that one, too.
Ordinance O-225, Alderman Yielding?
Uh, that's still at the, uh, Planning Commission. I don't know when the, when is their meeting this month?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, there's, yes, they've got another public hearing at the twenty-first, and then they'll make their recommendation and send it back.
Ordinance O-226, Alderman Thomas and Berry?
We'd like to withdraw that.
Ordinance O-233, Alderman Bestel and Berry?
We have an amendment today.
Uh, I wanna call that one. We have a replacement amendment. Can you read it, please?
This is an ordinance rezoning certain property located in Mon, Monbell Boulevard, southwest of Council Nancy Road, in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-2 to R-4 Martha Family Zone, to allow construction of an apartment complex by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
I'd like to take it to the third reading and then amend it. I'd like a spin rule placed here in front of the second reading.
Motion made, seconded, uh, spin rules on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
In notice rezoning certain property located in Monbell Boulevard, southwest of Council Nancy Road, in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-2 to R-4 Martha Family Zone, to allow construction of an apartment complex by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Spin the rules placed here in front of the third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
In notice rezoning certain property located in Monbell Boulevard, southwest of Council Nancy Road, in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-2 to R-4 Martha Family Zone, to allow construction of an apartment complex by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Um, I'd like, uh, we have this amendment, and I'd like Mr. Wolf to address that, please.
Uh, why don't we get a motion to adopt the amendment?
Motion.
Motion made, seconded, and that's the amendment that, uh, you know, Mr. Sussky passed out?
Yes, it is, and I need to, uh, add an amendment to that one, after y'all amend that amendment, if that makes sense.
Uh, yeah. Mr. Wolf, you wanna come to the microphone?
Yes, sir, we have, uh, a request to rezon property there behind the Monbell Nursery. Uh, it's currently zoned industrial, and there's been, this is the third property owner that's, uh, wanting to build apartments there. Uh, they've come in, and they've, they're developing their plans, they're thinking a different use for the eastern one-point-nine acres, and are asking that that portion be deleted. Uh, they're trying to work out a route for possible commercial on the eastern portion of that, and maybe add, uh, more property at a later meeting for more, um, residential use, uh, south of this property. So the request today is to delete, uh, the one-point-nine acres on the eastern portion of that property from the requested eleven acres. Keith Richardson is the property owner, and I think Bob Holloway's here to speak, if we have any other questions.
Any questions?
Um, if I may?
Yes.
Are these, uh, market-rate rents?
These are going to be market-rate apartments.
We need to mo, vote on substituting this, and that motion's been made.
That motion's been made, and, uh, and seconded, uh, that this, uh, legislation be amended by the substitution of this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Question, please, I've got, then the, the attachments, that being the aerial photograph and the maps, are, are not correct, that were on the original piece of legislation, is that, is that what you're telling us?
Well, it's in the same vicinity. Uh, they're just, it's a different owner acquiring this from, uh, Dr. Randy Machen, and, um, he has a different concept plan. I think he's gonna be coming back with a request for additional rezonings later, but the western portion is the same.
Okay, all right, Mr. Wolf, could you tell me whether these are right or wrong? Just look at them quickly, and if so, I'd like to...
The minute, it must've been not in color.
No, and if, if...
This is the portion that's, uh, for the state apartment.
Okay.
The minute, drop, two acres, and there's a small map attached.
That's the original.
Uh, what they are, probably, to, 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 drop out.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. But are, are those pictorial exhibits correct?
This is the property request.
Okay.
Eleven acres.
All right.
They're asking it to be dropped back to about nine acres. Uh, they'll be coming back to wanting to acquire the property south and come into more residential. That'll be a later request. This is the main hearing, we're reaching, and it's going from industrial to residential.
Okay, all right, so it's not applicable.
Any other questions on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, we, we got another amendment, don't we?
Hey, yes, and if there's anybody here with the parties, I'd appreciate their input. At four oh nine this afternoon, we got a fax from Harden and Grace, Andy Francis, an attorney, uh, indicating to me that they, both parties, there's a buyer and seller, thought of this property, would like this rezoning conditioned upon the applicant, which is the buyer, acquiring title. And I've drawn up an amendment that could reflect that.
Uh, what, what they're saying is that this, they're asking that this be conditioned on the completion of the purchase.
Yes.
If they, if they do not follow through with the purchase of the property, they'd like for it to stay industrial.
You got any problems with that, Mr. Wolf?
I have no problem.
You got any problems with that, Mr. Sussky?
Not at all, do you want the amendment?
Well, if his sponsor wants to do it, then give us some words.
Um, I'll make the amendment as Mr. Sussky will state it.
Okay, it's a new Section Two, and then the, uh, old Section Two, Three, Four, et cetera increases by one number. Section Two is that this rezoning is conditioned upon the applicant acquiring title to the subject property.
The applicant?
The applicant, that is, the person applying for the rezoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
To that motion?
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, next item is O-237, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Gibson and Yielding?
I think we wanna call, don't we, Alderman?
Yes.
All right.
This is an ordinance setting forth responsibilities of utilities using public rights away for street or curb cuts, repealed in Section ninety-two, ninety-four dash twenty-one through Section ninety-four dash fifty-four of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, amended Article Three of Chapter ninety-four of North Little Rock Municipal Code. First reading.
No, it's third reading.
Okay, uh, it's on the floor, uh, what's your...
Amendment, it's wasn't passed out, and let it replace the original ordinance.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, that the, uh, legislation be amended by the substitution of this legislation. Do you have that? Do you have that?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
There you do.
Uh, any further, any discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, I know.
I have one question.
Alderman Gibson?
And that's the, we, we, we tried here to, in section A, we, we, uh, does the days refer to calendar days or working days in section A?
Working days.
Working days, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take that. And Mr. Sussky, does, is, what's, what's, I gave away my copy of the legislation all the time. Can I look over your shoulder?
Yep.
Uh, when it, which, which section you talking about, Alderman Gibson?
In, in section A, mainly because you get into the other days with lane closure, those are, those are real days. But in section A, uh, I believe we would be referring to working days.
That's correct.
On the section two A.
Uh, just in order to clarify, Mr. Sussky, why don't you put, uh, you know, uh, you know, somewhere you wanna stick in that we, you know, define day, so there won't be a question about?
Well, we, I tried to do that, but days become different things when you start talking about calendar days on lane closures and street closures and some things like that, so it became difficult to put in a, uh, to put in, to change the word day to simply mean any, uh, what we, we tried to put in, what was the wording, one, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, well, we came up with a couple options. What I might recommend is define day for section one A as working day, and all other sections of the ordinance shall mean calendar day.
Well, either that or, or, or put in section A, if obtained prior, if obtained prior to the beginning of work, the fee shall be, uh, per calendar day.
Per working.
Per working day, as follows.
Okay.
And that way, it'll just be in that section.
I'll make that amendment.
Per working day as follows.
I'll make that amendment.
Uh, Alderman, uh, Yielding makes that amendment, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, motion made, seconded, on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption? Where we are, it's been read three times.
Yeah, let me just ask a question. I know that, uh, that a part of the correspondence, uh, the Reliant Gas submitted a letter, uh, do we know if, uh, if some of those, uh, has that letter been considered?
That was my question.
Well, I'll, I'll try to, uh, uh, I'll try to deal with that. Uh, the working days, we, we covered that in this one. Uh, true emergencies, they want five working days before they tell us what they're doing. We personally think that's four too many. Uh, after the tenth day, uh...
Now, is that, 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 you're just talking about a working day?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. On, on, there item number C, uh, in this one here, Arcla must on occasion monitor leak repairs for thirty to sixty days after each repair to make to ensure that the repair be, was effective. Uh, they did that in my front yard, and I don't think that's something that we need to do, so I think we've dealt with that. Uh, the one that they don't like is the one that probably caused some of those, uh, problems. They, uh, they don't want their contractors to have anything to say on them about Arcla. They're doing work for Arcla and...
Where's your language on that?
Uh, section, I'm looking on their, I'm looking at their letter.
I know, but where is this, where is it covered in there?
It's in section three A.
Three A. It says you will have some kind of notification, it's much like the gentleman that I found working behind McDonald's. Uh, I, I personally feel like anybody working in our streets, we need to know who they're working for.
It, it, if you, if you read it, it says that, that they need to have some sign, uh, legible on their vehicle or a portable sign using at each loc- cut location that bears, uh, the same and is kept in conspicuous place while, while the work is taking place. So, they've got several alternatives.
They got alternatives.
Right.
Uh, and I think we've handled, maybe not to their total satisfaction, but I, but, uh, within, I think it's reasonable that the details that we worked out in the amend, in the amended ordinance.
Anything else?
That's it.
So, would, how did you work it out?
We simply said, leaving something open for thirty to sixty days is, is not, their, their, their request in C is not valid, that they not have to put placards or any notification of who's doing the work for. We don't think that's a valid, and we handled their first two.
So, you're, you're saying that they got to label their, uh, equipment, their trucks, barricades?
They gotta put something out there so that we know.
And everybody knows.
And everybody knows who's doing the work. You cannot have a truck sitting around here digging up the streets of North Little Rock where we have no apparent knowledge of who they are and...
What about, what about some portable sign that, uh, they could just merely, you know?
They can just, it's allowed, they can just slap it.
As far as labeling their trucks or their barricades or equipment, that's...
They can go portable sign right on the side of their vehicle.
That could be prohibited.
There's, there are two other contractors that do that, is that we're doing what, that says it's a contractor for Comcast or a contractor for Arcla or Reliant in this case. Uh, and I know that, uh, it's gonna mean that we do the same thing, that when in North Little, when, when the electric department hires an outside contractor, we're gonna be required, if we're digging in a right-of-way, uh, to do some of the similar things. But, uh, I think we and the citizens have a right to know who's doing that work out there, or, and who they're doing it for. Some of that work is up in people's yards.
Well, I, you know, I understand, I mean, as far as, uh, you know, some, a contractor, Arcla, or whether it be the water department, the sewer department, or whoever, you know, at least have some sign that, that, you know?
That they're a contractor for.
I, you know, I, personally, I think that this amendment, along with the, uh, the rest of the ordinance, is like reading numbers in Deuteronomy in the Bible in the Old Testament. It's, you know, it's, uh, it's, to me, there's a lot, there's too many laws in there, there's just too many, there's, we're a long way there to just to smother.
Since I don't work for Public Utilities, it's probably easier for me to, to make the decision.
I understand that.
Guide this city council in a direction that we need to be.
And I, and, and while, while I guess I have the floor, I guess I'm gonna put in my two cents worth. I think that we need to take it, take care of the city, on any city-owned utilities, myself.
And we done that.
As far as, uh, you know, our sewer department, our electric department.
We done that.
Okay.
Mr. Mills, is, uh, something, Alderman Thomas said you were around there somewhere.
I thought you wanted to speak.
Okay.
He left this.
He was.
Uh, you disappeared, Mr. Mills.
I believe Mr. Yielding met with him this last week, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I absolutely believe that it'd be a security issue, too.
Sure.
I mean, anybody, if you think anybody just drive up in the yard and go to dig in a hole in there, they could be doing anything.
Mr. Mills?
Um, was there a question for me? I may have missed it.
Uh, Alderman Thomas said you wanted to make a comment.
I thought you wanted to speak, I thought you wanted to say something.
Well, I've, I've said a lot to a number of these gentlemen over the past week or so, including the mayor. I think I've gotten my point across. I spoke just, um, uh, Friday, I believe it was, with, uh, Alderman Yielding, and I believe we've reached a, a place that I can be satisfied with, and, and the city will be served well by the utility and by the council.
We've got, uh, another gentleman back there, you wanna talk on this topic?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're freewheeling right now, so help yourself.
Mayor, Council, um, my name is Darryl Boggs, I'm the Assistant Director of Distribution with Central Arkansas Water. And basically, at this point, um, wanted, I believe tonight was the night that the ordinance was gonna be voted on and wanted to express our desire to possibly postpone that a little bit. We got the notice for this ordinance on the twenty-sixth from Mr. Boles, and, uh, and I still have not seen the amended one that y'all are passing around, so I, I don't know what that says or doesn't say. But, um, Central Arkansas Water has no problem with, uh, the city of North Little Rock wanting, wanting to get out of the street recut repair business itself with its own crews. In fact, um, North Little Rock Water, previous, uh, and Central Arkansas Water now, does pay all permitting fees. We permit every cut we do, and we also pay for the registration at the rate set forth by North Little Rock since I can remember doing it. And my previous title was the distribution superintendent of North Little Rock Water, so I worked intimately with Mr. Archer on getting those repairs done. And what, what we would like to have some more dialogue on is the timelines and the multiplied penalty scheme that is in the ordinance. Um, we're not, we're not opposed to people that don't take accountability and responsibility for their cuts, being penalized in some way or, or have some incentive to do better. But, um, speaking for Central Arkansas Water and, or North Little Rock Water, we feel we've had a pretty good relationship with North Little Rock, and we've taken accountability for our cuts and our repairs, and would like to, you know, talk some more about the, the ten-day timeline, which, that's the point at which the, the penalties and fees really multiply by five times. Uh, and, you know, basically, that's gonna impact our budget substantially if the ordinance as proposed pass. Uh, there's also a twenty-five day timeline maximum where a hundred dollar a day per penalty would be assessed if, if, you know, the repairs would exceed that back to day, day one. Uh, and one of our issues right now is, is we have a, under current contract, a contractor who does restoration repair for us in Little Rock, in the county, uh, just this year added Sherwood, um, to that. And the contact, contract time we have with them is thirty days plus seven days for us to get them the permit. And in some research that I've done this last week, since we've gotten this notice, an average time for them to repair, uh, one of our fifteen hundred cuts that we do in central Arkansas area is about twenty-one days. So, you can see, if the ordinance passes as proposed, the penalty fees for us are going to be substantial, and, uh, we're, we're just wanting to maybe, uh, talk a little bit more on, on what might be deemed, uh, I believe the article has it called, uh, a reasonable amount of time to get a repair done before the substantial fees are incurred. And I don't know if we're too late at this point to request that maybe this ordinance be, uh, looked at at a later date where we could talk about that issue some more, but, uh, I would like to request that.
Alderman Gibson?
I don't guess I see the multiplier here because on ten days is thirty-five dollars, and eleven days is forty-five, twelve days is fifty-five.
Okay, again, you, are you, you going off the new?
Going off the new ordinance and...
I'm sorry, we, I haven't seen this, I don't, I don't know if anybody at Central Arkansas Water has seen it. I was going off the, uh, the old one, which multiplied times two, times five, depending on where you're at. Again, another reason why I would like for us to be able to take a look at the, the amended ordinance, uh, before final word is passed on, that's the rate structure that's gonna be implemented.
Let me, let me make a suggestion. Uh, I know that we, we, obviously, this, this version just, you know, just came before you, but I, I know that we've been talking in this area for a, a long time. You know, I, I, part of my responsibility is to enforce that, and, you know, I'll be happy to visit, you know, with, with, you know, with you and/or any other representative of Central Arkansas Water regarding what's reasonable about the enforcement of that. Uh, and, and rest assured, you know, we, we, we try to be as reasonable as we know how, subject to the directions given by the council. If this council wants to adopt this, I just wanted to let you know that I would certainly initiate, you know, conversations with Central Arkansas Water as well as any utility, and if, if being reasonable, you know, in terms of, of what some of this legislation works out to be is not, then we'll either amend it or we'll, you know, try to enter into some understanding, uh, that takes into accommodation your concerns after you've got a chance to review it.
It doesn't go into effect for six weeks. I think that's gonna give them, I think if we can pass it tonight, have some opportunity to visit with it, if there's something that is totally, that, that we missed in all of the meetings we've had with everybody, that, uh, it should be amended before July one. And that's gives us four, gives us five meetings. Three meetings.
So, what, so what we can do, unless, unless there's a, if council wants to do otherwise, we'll have something in, in the definit, as a definitive expression of the will of this council, and obviously, again, I have five days to veto it. If it's really onerous or some way that I might not feel that I could do it because of, of the executive responsibility I have, then we, we would deal with that. But then the third is what Alderman Gibson said, is, is we would have an opportunity before it goes into effect to come back and, uh, and amend it if, if even, if that needed to be done. So, we've got several tools that we can use, but I think we have something definitive expression of what this council wants to do, and that way, we could deal with reality rather than with a, 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 a piece of legislation that hasn't been adopted yet.
Thank you.
Alderman Witcher?
Okay, uh, first of all, let me, you know, let me say I am in favor of this ordinance. You know, I do have a question. All right, we have a project in Ward Four of Seminole that began on Pontiac and is proceeding north. Uh, I think, we're back, I think Central Arkansas Water is, is, one of their contractors is working on it. They are making multiple street cuts at different times. The project's been going on for four, five, s- six weeks, uh, right now. So, you know, how would you handle the fee structure and that because?
Three G.
Because, you know, you, you end up with multiple cuts across the street, uh, as you work your way down the, down the street.
Uh, Alderman Gibson, Yielding, Alderman Yielding.
I think I can answer that. Uh, what they're doing is not just fixing one problem, they're actually laying a line. They're actually doing relocation, and that is not, and if they're doing something like that, then that does not, and let me go here, the ordinance does not...
Three G.
Three G. This ordinance does not apply to a utility company relocation or new facility work, but only to routine maintenance of existing facilities. The distinction between routine and relocation of a new facility is if the plans are required to be signed by a professional engineer. Work not requiring professional engineer stamp will be considered routine, so that takes care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My question was, though, is that, what is the normal process? I mean, you, you, you cut a street, and, you know, are y'all taking care of on both sides of the river now, Central Arkansas Water?
Well, there's been two separate processes in place up until the merger. In North Little Rock, uh, we, the relationship we worked out with Mr. Archer and the city is they gave us, give us a bank of, of cut permit books with numbers. Our crews, whenever they do a cut inside, and this just addresses asphalt and street cuts now, not, we have never been required to address right-of-way permitting or, or cuts in the yards. But, uh, we would, the day the work is performed, and probably eighty-five percent of our work is the maintenance emergency work, therefore, we could not give the five days notice, we don't know when a, a water line is gonna burst, so the day that it happens and our crews do make the cut, we fill out the paperwork, the cut size, at the end of that day, it is routed to Ms. Mary Hayes through the interdepartmental mail that the city of North Little Rock has. So usually within a day or two tops, uh, Mr. Archer at the street department has that permit that needs to be repaired. And then, as in past, at that point, they have been taking the accountability and responsibility to repair that street cut, um-
North Little Rock has.
North Little Rock Street Department, yes. And we pay them a per-unit charge to do that. And the, the charge has been the same forever and it is quite low and I understand that, you know, when we do contract it out, it'll be higher and, and we understand that and we're not opposed to doing that. Um, you know, however, the charges that will be incurred upon the tenth day or, and, and I'll need to relook at the, at the new scale, uh, basically was, was very substantial based on our current contract. Now, in Little Rock, they have for years contracted out all of their restoration work through a private contractor, the city does not do their work for them. And they also have a contract price, which is substantially higher than what North Little Rock has been doing it over here. Um, and, and based on that already contracted agreement, which is already budgeted for the rest of this year, um, adding all the cuts, which I, I estimate about another hundred and sixty will probably be done in North Little Rock the rest of this year, adding that to their workload and their average repair time, couple that in with the permit charges that I read, uh, could be quite substantial and, and our budget just doesn't allow for it right now. Uh, that in itself is an issue other than, you know, I, we had some issue with the actual ten-day timeline, uh, to get a repair completed.
Did I hear you say, Arger, that there's only one contractor in the county that does restoration?
No, we, we have a contractor that we've contracted with. We'll take, each year we take out bids for who, for who will do that for the, the utility.
Do you anticipate, and then I think we can move on, do you anticipate, uh, that transitioning from your, uh, workload of your existing contractor to this additional workload, that six weeks will be sufficient time to do that?
Um, we could probably make the paper trail happen. Uh, again, Mr. Harvey's gonna bear the burden on the, the financial differences that we're gonna incur going that route, but, uh, if, if we can look at the issue of, of the fees and, and the, the multiplied scale, as it were, uh, I know I read today's article that there was a comment that basically Central Arkansas Water would not be considered for any variances or, or exemptions, uh, in that regard, so that's why we would like to-
Well, let me, let me just say this, as we work through, assuming the council adopts this, as we work through it, you know, we're gonna be real sensitive to what's reasonable and prudent in terms of what our utility friends are, are having to go through. So, you know, if there needs to be amendment, we'll address it. If it can be done from an administrative position, you know, rest assured that will be done.
We would appreciate that.
Uh, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, which motion?
For adoption.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
And Witcher?
The emergency, Gibson?
There is no emergency.
No emergency.
There-
Section nine, call us.
Shall be in effect as of July one, so I guess there would be, yes.
I'm sorry, there was-
I'm sorry. It's effective July one, so that's more, that's less than sixty days.
That's a, that's a quite, it's an emergency to a time cert.
Gibson votes yes.
Thank you. Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, and, uh, and let me repeat, uh, review what we've adopted and, uh, and we'll work toward trying to make sure there's no, uh, more kickups than absolutely necessary. Alderman, Witcher?
Mayor, does, does this particular process open itself to electronic application process?
I think everything does.
They could apply and then we could assign a number and that way they'd know that they have it. It would, it would expedite the services.
Whatever we need to do, uh, Mr. Sisson, and by the way, we wanna welcome, uh, you know, Mr. Sisson has been watching from the, uh, outside and, uh, and, and as we all know, Bob has, has been on a little R and R over the last, uh, several weeks and we're glad that he's back. Uh, so Bob, uh, Bob's nodding and, uh, and Stephanie, you know, between the two of them as well as the finance department, we'll figure out the easiest way to make it administratively slick as possible. Maybe I shouldn't use the word slick, uh, efficient, efficient.
One thing's for sure, I don't wanna give out any more permit books to any utility to write their own permits.
Uh, next item, let's go to new business. All right.
Resolution oh-two sixty-five, Alderman, Thomas and Dobbin's.
Call it, please.
A resolution appropriating thirty thousand dollars from general improvement funds received by the city from the state of Arkansas with the adoption of Act sixteen ninety-one of two thousand and one for certain capital improvements.
I'd like to move for the adoption. Second, and I've got one question, maybe just an amendment.
All right, uh, motion made and seconded, uh, state your question on-
I believe in the, in discussions I've had over the phone and that they were considering this was to buy playground equipment.
Right.
And so just, and is hereby appropriated for school playground and put the word equipment there.
Well, I, I'd like to say one thing, uh, I thought it'd come very appropriate because over the weekend, uh, there was a lot of vandalism at two of these schools and some of the computers, uh, were damaged and I know they'd like to, to replace those, so, uh, uh, no, uh, Representative Tracy's, is here, maybe he could speak to that, but I was, uh, hoping they could spend it as they, they saw fit.
Well, if it, if, here, here's the situation and, and since it's ten thousand dollars and we, and the city passes the money and it has to be bid in some scope or some kind because it reaches the limit, uh, the overall project is thirty thousand, I don't mind taking out the word playground and just put school equipment.
Let's put school equipment there.
And that'll fulfill the, the need.
And, and just ten thousand each school?
Yes.
Right.
Still have to go through the city's person office. That's your amendment, I'll second.
Okay, I'll make that amendment.
On the motion to amend, Mr. Whittaker?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I know we have several other items, but I know, uh, Representative, uh, soon-to-be Senator Steele is out in the, uh, audience and, uh, and we wanna thank him as well, you know, for taking the lead on this, as well as, I think you had some, a little bit of collegiate, uh, support, uh, Senator Hoofman on the senate side and your colleagues, uh, Mr. Bright and Mr. Perry Ann Salmon, uh, who is also a senate candidate, uh, on the, on the house side, but we appreciate your leadership, uh, on this as well as the other items, I think, that are flowing, uh, behind this with other legislative enactments by sen, by senators. Uh, by Alderman, Dobbin, Dobbin and Thomas. With that, uh, thank you again.
I'd add one, just one question.
Uh, yes.
I, I serve on a commission in North Little Rock and, uh, we have occasion, we have people ask us for monies, we, and we, uh, you call those grants. Have, have these schools, uh, have they requested these funds from y'all in this amount for playground equipment or?
They certainly, they certainly need it.
Yeah, they, there's been some various requests.
Have, have you gotten any, any cost estimates as to what the playground equipment does cost?
No.
I know. We use it.
Next item?
Um, they voted on the amendment.
Before we get out this.
Amendment.
Actually, actually, we have that passed, actually. I don't think. Okay, Mr. Dobbin, if you recall when, when all this money started, you know, I asked you for a list of, you know, I wanted a full disclosure of how you were gonna spend all this money.
Yeah, that's a good point. And, uh, what has happened is with the budget situation, state level, Representative Steele can talk more than that, it wasn't a surety that all that, those monies would, would actually reach us.
Right.
And, and actuality, there's, there's, there, you'll see later, it's gonna be an amendment.
I, I guess one of the points I wanna make to you is this still concerns me, the way this is handled, you know, and I, and I would feel, and what I realize, there's some language in here that says necessary documents and I realize it's, or at least I hope it's gonna go into the school district funds and they'll be administering this, and I, I'm still concerned about the way we're doing this. I, I ain't gonna support it.
No, I appreciate that.
I just want you to know, I'm still concerned about it.
Any, uh, any further comments? I think we have a motion, uh, and a second, uh, on the motion.
I just had a comment.
The four or the vote?
For the vote.
All right.
Uh, actually, the monies will be kept in the city fund and they will, uh- They'll make it- They will submit their request to our Department of Commerce, Government Affairs when they want to spend the money, so everything can be done according to our purchasing.
Up to ten thousand.
Right, right.
Well, I think the mayor has a, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Sure, sure.
I, I think the mayor has a policy, anything over five thousand dollars, we normally bid it.
That's what Mark said.
Even though the state regulates-
Right, right.
That's what I said.
It's, yeah, and it's less than that, uh, we get three quotes, uh, not a formal bid, but we, we do have at least three quotes.
Okay, I just wanted to say.
Uh, on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, resolution oh-two sixty-six, Alderman, Thomas and Dobbin's.
Call it.
No, on that one, we wanna hold that one.
Hold that one.
Next item, resolution oh-two sixty-seven, Alderman, Thomas and Dobbin's.
Please call it.
Yes, call it.
A resolution appropriating twenty-seven thousand dollars from general improvement funds received by the city from the state of Arkansas with the adoption of Act sixteen ninety-one of two thousand and one for certain capital improvements.
I'd like to make an amendment to that, uh, cost figure, uh, move it from twenty-seven thousand to twenty-six.
No, second that.
On the motion to amend.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
The pro adoption is amended.
That's amended, I second.
Motion made and seconded, adopt this amendment, Alderman Vestal.
Uh, what kind of improvements are we talking about? That you, that you're able to lower that by one thousand dollars? I've had some general idea.
Well, one of the things that's happened is some of the budget shortfalls and the monies and, uh, some of the general improvement needs at Ro City, uh, is numerous, if, if you can look at. And one of the things we wanna do is make sure that facility is safe and knowing the situation also with our parks and recreation budgets, Bob Rose and, and others have, uh, other commissioners have certainly needed, uh, some improvement as, as well as help with the, uh, pile program as well as the other athletic programs there.
Boys' club as well?
Yes, boys' club as well.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, resolution oh-two sixty-eight, Alderman, Thomas and Dobbin's.
Call it, please.
A resolution appropriating twenty-one thousand dollars from general improvements funds received by the city from the state of Arkansas with the adoption of Act sixteen ninety-one of two thousand and one for certain capital improvements.
I move for the adoption.
Second.